Okay, this is the Village of Peatone Board Meeting, the first one of 2013 for January 14th, 2013. I ask everybody to stand and say the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Riker.
Here.
Mr. Hupkey.
Here.
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Callahan. Mr. Forsythe.
Here.
Mr. Libertor.
Okay, let the record show that we have a quorum present and can officially conduct business. The first order of business will be the approval or correction to the minutes of our last meeting, which was December 10th, 2012, a whole year ago. Trustees, go through the minutes. If you find any things we need to correct, let us know. Otherwise, I will accept, entertain a motion to accept the minutes of December 10th, 2012, as presented.
I would motion we approve the minutes of December 10th, 2012.
Motion by trustee Riker, seconded by trustee Hupkey, to approve the December 10th, 2012 regular village board meeting minutes as presented. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan. Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Okay, minutes are approved as presented. Next order of business has to do with accounts payable and the payroll. You will recall, trustees, that we had at our meeting prior to the December 10th meeting, we had okayed the payment of the regular bills subject to being ratified at this meeting. And so, we have in your packet, first of all, there's going to be two motions. The payroll for the pay period ending December 8th, 2012, in the amount of forty-three thousand, one hundred two dollars and thirty-seven cents. We also have bills from the general fund totaling nine thousand, thirty-five dollars and thirty-four cents, bills from the motor fuel tax fund totaling seven thousand, nine hundred sixty-three dollars and nine cents, bills from the water and sewer fund totaling twenty-six thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. The total for the general fund, motor fuel tax fund, and water sewer fund bills is forty-three thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars and sixteen cents. I will entertain a motion to ratify the paying of the bills for, as I just noted.
I make a motion we ratify the paying bills for 12th, 2012.
Okay. Motion by trustee, thank you. Seconded by trustee Riker. All of a sudden, I have one of those.
That's what I just did.
Yeah. To pay the bills for the pay period 2012-8 and the other bills that would normally have been paid on the meeting of the 24th, which have been canceled. So clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes. Okay, motion passed. Those bills are ratified as paid. The next item has to do with the current bills, which are the pay periods for December 22nd, 2012, in the amount of forty-four thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Payroll for the pay period ending January 5th, 2013, in the amount of forty-five thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. We also have, under accounts payable, from the general fund, bills totaling sixty-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-one cents, and bills from the water and sewer fund totaling forty-seven thousand, three hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. Total for general fund and water sewer funds is one hundred sixteen dollars, one hundred sixteen thousand, seven hundred one dollars and sixty-two cents. Do I have a motion to pay the bills for this meeting?
I make a motion we pay the bills.
Motion by trustee Wicker.
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Riker, to pay the bills as presented for this meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
And Mr. Hupkey.
Yes. Okay. Motion carries. The bill is paid as noted. We come to an item on the agenda for public comment and/or questions for any non-agenda item. In other words, if you're here to talk about something that's on the agenda later, we'll talk to you then. I will note that we have in the audience several members of the police scout troop, Luke Shubi and Justin Zerewitz, okay? And another scout who just walked in the door, whose name is?
Zach Howrigell.
Zach?
Yeah.
And your last name? Okay. Zach. These gentlemen are working on one of their merit badges having to do with community government.
Communications.
Communications. Oh, even better. All right. And we always welcome the scouts to our group, and you don't have to work in a merit badge to come. You can come anytime. Now, moving on the agenda, we have reports of committees, officials, and staff. Trustees, you will find in your packet the reports from the clerk, collector, and treasurer for the months of November and December, indicating the amounts of receipts that have come in and what our button balances are in those various months for each account. If there is no question on any of that, we will move ahead. Hearing that, I'm going to move ahead to the police chief report. And chief, if you'd like to update us on some things?
It's been so long since we've seen each other, I forgot where we left off. But I'm sure I'll catch up soon. It's like I supplied the board members with, in the press, copy of a press release we released involving the GREAT program, which is gang resistance education and training. Today was the inaugural day of instruction at our seventh grade class of approximately about 200 students. I can't hardly say enough about the support of the Peatone School District and this village board with letting us proceed with this program and allowing my staff to go away and be trained. I was very excited as I sit in on some of the instruction today, to see us relating in a positive atmosphere with the young people of our schools and try to deal with the problems that they face in today's real world. Ironically, what is always an extreme concern is a question asked by the instructor to the group was, "Do you feel the presence of gang activity in Peatone?" Surprisingly enough, that a majority of hands were displayed, in some sense, of young people or people in our community that want to display that type of behavior. And it's something that we have to be very proactive against. I think the GREAT program is a program that will offer us much knowledge in dealing with the youth and hopefully we open the doors of communication with them so we can work together to keep them out of this gang activity and violence that is in today's world. And they don't look as police as the bad guy when we have to be enforced the regulations of today's real world. I know the mayor came over today and spoke to the young group. I can tell you, the instructor was worn out. Some of his teachers returned some criticism of him being in the classroom because there's some of them were still there. They were shocked that now he's teaching, but I think it's a good start, and I appreciate this board and the school district for their partnership in this program because it did take approximately about a year to get it going. I mean, you have to apply, you have to get the instructors sent away, and you know, and it's a federal program, so there is a lot of waiting for the government to decide what they're going to do, when they're going to train. And we were able to coordinate with the schools and get the program started today, right after. We gave them a week off before they came back to school last week. We thought we went and hit them the first day of school, we give a little bounce, and then next week they're off to school for Martin Luther King Day, so they get a little break, and then they have about 13 more lesson plans they get to work with our staff. So that's really about all I have to say to the board today. The holidays were the holidays, and they're over. Now it's cold. Public, we've put out warnings. We haven't had to worry about snowfall yet, as we talk about that, but it is cold. And I would hope that people remember that warming up your cars is nice. I would secure them, though, because some people may want to use them for the wheels of opportunity to get to school or other places that they don't want to let their car warm up. And that has a constant problem in the winter months. If there's no questions, I'll...
Anybody have any questions? And the chief?
Thank you.
Thanks. Moving on down the agenda to the engineer's report. Troy Goings is here to report this week, this month. We actually have him up at the table here as opposed to sitting in the audience. Troy, update us on what's going on.
Only one project update tonight. The generator at the Conrad Avenue lift station has now been installed and is operational. That project's complete except for restoration, which will be done in the spring. And that's all I have.
Okay. Trustees, have any questions of the engineer? Hearing that, I'm going to move on. We have no old business. Under new business, we have the topic of the boundary agreement with the village of Peatone, which, or village of Beecher, which we're going to discuss. George?
The village of Beecher has asked that we renew our boundary agreement. The current agreement does not expire until 2017. However, Beecher would like to renew proactively. Peatone currently has boundary agreements with Beecher, Moni, Manhattan, and Mantino. Boundary agreement is a formal agreement between two entities, typically municipalities, that defines a geographic boundary. The agreement carries the force of a legal contract. In most agreements, this boundary establishes a boundary that limits municipal, municipalities' power to annex and force zoning and subdivision regulations, et cetera, past the common border. By the same token, the partner in the agreement has similar limitations on their side of the border. Boundary agreements do not provide any additional powers or authorities for annexation, and they do not obligate the village to annex property upon petition. Boundary agreements are usually, are universally looked upon as sound professional planning tools. They provide direction as to scope of services for water and sewer utilities, transportation systems, and land use plan. Our current master water plan, master sewer plan, and comprehensive plan extend to the limits of our boundary agreements. The current agreement establishes Crawford Avenue as the border. Beecher wishes to retain this boundary. The new agreement will have a term of 20 years. Aside from some format, there are no material changes from the current agreement. This is for discussion only, see if you have any input. Beecher is doing a public notice for both municipalities, and we'll have this in the form of ordinance at a future time, probably in February sometime. Just wanted to see if anybody had any comments.
For the sake of the scout, I'm just going to add a little bit more comment. We have had an agreement with Beecher as to someday in the future, when the towns all grow towards each other, what can we agree upon would be the boundary between Peatone and Beecher, when that day arrives, whatever it may be? It helps us with planning. And so Crawford Avenue has been the agreed-upon in the previous agreement, and this agreement essentially will reestablish that for another 20 years if it goes through. So that's the idea behind it. Any questions or comments? Okay, that was only for discussion purposes, so...
The old agreement, the boundaries haven't changed, nothing's changed.
Yep.
Any reason they would want to do this three years in advance? I mean, I know that you said they're proactive, but...
No, because the mayor's retiring.
Yeah, the mayor retired.
He's been there for a long time.
And he's a firm believer in boundary agreements, and I think just as part of his legacy, he wants to make sure it's renewed.
Good question.
Well, we've all had a great relationship with him, so...
Yeah. Okay. Moving on the agenda to the release of the Westgate Unit 3 maintenance bond.
The developer of Westgate Manor Unit 3 has posted a letter of credit number 303. The letter of credit serves as a maintenance bond for installed improvements, which is basically a one-year warranty. The letter of credit is in the amount of thirty thousand, eighty dollars and sixty-one cents. The developer's bank sent written notice, the LOC has reached its one-year term and has expired. However, the text of the letter of credit, as all of our letter of credits say, states that the one-year term only applies if the bank has provided notice by certified mail to the village 60 days prior to expiration. No such notice was presented, where the expiration language is not applicable. However, this is all kind of a moot question. The warranty period has been honored. They've done the maintenance over the course of a year, and I don't think they needed to actually do anything, but they did honor it. The department heads have inspected the work, and they found no actionable items. Therefore, staff recommends the release of letter of credit number 303 in the amount of thirty thousand, eighty dollars and sixty-one cents. And I will not cloud the issue, but we just, for those who may remember, there is another letter of credit, and it's number 304, in the amount of fifty thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents for Westgate Unit 3. That's primarily for sidewalks and parkway trees that have not been installed yet. This doesn't touch that. That remains in fact.
And again, for the sake of the scouts, letters of credit, anytime a developer comes in, they are required to do certain things before their property is considered finished. And the letter of credit basically is a guaranteed letter from a bank that if they don't do the work, we can claim it. And we have done this in the past when a developer went bankrupt, so that we could finish the unfinished things that the residents are able to not have undone things in their neighborhood. Any discussion? Any questions? Hearing that, I will entertain a motion to release the Westgate Manor letter of credit for Unit 3, or maintenance bond, letter of credit number 303, in the amount of thirty thousand, eighty dollars and sixty-one cents. So... Move. Motion by trustee Riker, seconded by trustee Wicker, to release the Westgate Manor Unit 3 maintenance bond, letter of credit number 303, in the amount of thirty thousand, eighty dollars and sixty-one cents. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
And Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
And Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and that letter of credit will be released as noted. Next item on the agenda is a discussion topic relative to amending the liquor code. George?
The Peatone Park District has advertised a Texas Hold'em event, Texas Hold'em event, to be held at the American Legion. These events are regulated by both state gaming code and our local ordinances. The state gaming code requires a charitable gaming license to conduct this type of event. Park District is ineligible to obtain this license. The legion who is providing the location has agreed to pursue a charitable gaming license. The state level, and this gets convoluted, I can't help it, this is just the way it is, okay? At the state level, a charitable gaming event requires the owner of the property hosting the event to obtain a provider permit. Provider permit allows the property owner to conduct up to eight charitable game nights per year. The organization conducting the event must obtain a state charitable gaming license. That's a separate piece of paper.
Two separate licenses.
That's right. The license allows the charity, including charities, educational organizations, and fraternal veterans or labor organizations, to hold charitable gaming events. A for-profit company is prohibited from receiving a charitable gaming license. At the village, we regulate gaming at two levels. First is village-wide, and the second are those places holding a liquor license. At the village-wide level, we have several exemptions from the gaming prohibition. These exemptions carry with them the need to comply with applicable state gaming codes, which in most cases requires licenses from the state. The holders of a local liquor license are restricted to conducting only lotteries and video gaming. The discussion before you this evening is to amend the local gaming restrictions on liquor license holders to permit charitable gaming, bingo, pull tabs and jar games, and raffles. Language from the village-wide exemptions could be added to the liquor license exemptions. Not all liquor license holders will be eligible to conduct these games, only those organizations meeting the requirements in state code. I understand that not-for-profits and veteran organizations are eligible to apply for state raffle, pull tab, and tip jar, and bingo licenses. The amendment would not create any additional village permit requirements or fees. And I know that Chief Mord has done some research on this, and basically the items that we're moving over, we reference that to be done under state law, and correct me if I'm not mistaken, but basically for-profit organizations would not be able to do that. Is that correct?
Yes, all the, Mr. Gray's summation in the board packet actually defines what people can be involved in the gaming concept of the state of Illinois. We kind of relate it to, there's gambling, which is illegal unless regulated in license, and there is gaming, which is what it's called now when you have all the permits from the state of Illinois.
Easiest way to put it.
I guess in the simple terms, but agencies that get bingo, pull tabs, raffles, and charitable games, like some of the requests that will be presented tonight to change, all have to be not-for-profit organizations. It cannot be business. The exception is only to the, where the event is being held, i.e., there's locations in Peatone that could be a provider/location license, but a business can only be a provider to host the event. The not-for-profit is the agency that gets the permit to do it. So it is a way how they've defined and termed it, but there is a provider/location license, as I say, that says you can hold it here. Then the not-for-profits or charitable games or bingo and all that has to have a permit, which is a not-for-profit, or the veterans group, as Mr. Gray has defined. But all the regulations for pull tabs, jar games, all the card games like Las Vegas Night, and all those Texas Hold'em tournaments are all part of the okay by the state, and you have to have the permits, and they have to be in place before the event can be held. And fortunately enough, some of this discussion came way ahead of time on the proposed advertised event being held later in February.
I mean, the things that we're moving into the liquor code are already there in the existing code, so it's not like...
The only thing we're trying to do is protect ourselves and adopt the state regulation to make everything proper and legal. That's all we want to do.
In the gambling violations, I call it the gambling penalty flag, there are exceptions. And a lot of the exceptions relate to bingo as applied by the state, the raffles that are applied by the county. Those permissions or procedures that are allowed, as Mr. Gray pointed out, are okay. We just need to add some of that language on our liquor code. We have, I could dig through here, I don't want to prolong the meeting. We have the video gaming, phase of exclusion, and we also have, what, Mr. Gray?
Lotteries.
Lotteries. And we need to add four other items, as he pointed out, because that would be consistent with the exceptions under the gambling statutes.
I think part of what people are concerned with is that there is nothing that we're proposing in any of this that is going to make gambling prevalent.
No.
Within the village itself. And what we all discovered in going through this is the requirements that the state has on all parties, including if one chooses to be the host site and the licensee of the charitable group, they must hire a licensed provider to bring in all the machines, all the poker chips, and everything else. And that person is licensed by the state, and there are all sorts of reports required to be submitted to the state for this to take place. You have in your packet, I think, trustees, examples of the ordinances that need to be adjusted, and today's topic, today's purpose is primarily to discuss this. Now, Gary, I don't know, do you want to say anything in regard to this? It could.
Yeah.
Come on up. This is Gary Clausen, the, you are now the commander.
I'm now the commander.
Legion postman.
Good evening. I'm Gary Clausen, and I'm representing the Peatone American Legion, Post 392. We're a nonprofit charitable organization, and we donate monthly to the Mantino Vets Home. We have the Mantino Vets come to most of all of our fish fries. We have a children's Christmas program, which our auxiliary helps with, and most of all of our town donates and pitches into this, the police department, fire department, and everybody. We have a scholarship fund program for the high school legion award winners. We have a legion award for the junior high, young man, young woman, showing leadership qualities. We have an adopted soldier program, supporting our areas newly enlisted servicemen and women. We support scouting programs, boys and girls state, and we support the village activities. We'd like the village board to consider amending the liquor code to include charitable gaming according to the Illinois State Charitable Gaming Act. This would allow the legion, which already has a premises permit and license from the state, to have fundraisers and events, because to do all the programs we have, we have to raise some money. And we have bartenders, and custodians, and I think our accountant are the only people that get paid, and everybody, and they donate a lot of their tax too, by the way. And everything else is donated, all, everything. So... So we're just asking you to consider that, and that would be helpful to us to raise some money. If there's any questions, I can answer, I will, and if I can't, I can give it away tomorrow.
Trustees, any questions you would like to ask?
To, just to inform the board, the legion has already applied for and received the provider license to host the event there. I'm understanding they've applied for the charitable games event, and that paperwork is being processed by the state and almost...
They have it, yeah.
They have it all. So they've, you know, they've stepped one, they've got the provider license, says you can have it at the legion. The charitable games laws them to have so many events a year, or whatever clause they want to have it. So the legion is the holder of the charitable games permit.
And one of the things, if this were to go through, that happens is the state regulations pretty much control it in terms of what types of things are required, and also requires them to notify the police department of the event. Should these, should any change... It, should these, should any changes take place, we would not be required to approve every event unless it impacted some other area of our ordinances. So that this is something that the legion, in this particular case, would be conducting with, following state rules, and then notifying us when they had any event, so that we were aware of it. And as I said before, and, and Gary, I think, is still finding out, there's a lot of reports and regulations that are, that state places on these groups in order to ensure that they're following the procedures of the license, and it's pretty much, once they notify us of an event, it's, there's, there are checks in place, so that this, this is controlled.
Right, and we want these run right, and we want them run up to the village, affects everything, and, you know, just.
See, this all, this all came about because the Park District needs some help.
Yeah.
They're trying to raise some funds, and they come to us, and we're stepping up to the plate, trying to help them pay for those things that they started here to make the town a little better.
I think we should've started here first.
Yeah.
But we're kinda.
We're, we're all on a learning curve on this one. We live and learn here.
Yeah.
But we're trying to do the right thing, that's what we're trying to do here.
Right. The legion also is using a third-party supplier.
Right.
And that's the one that comes in and gives them the chips, and sets up the boards, and designs everything, how it has to be laid out, and according to the legion management, helps them with all the paperwork and requirements, because the state's gonna get a cut, guaranteed.
Yeah.
And, you know, there is some paperwork, it's probably the paperwork, probably the equivalent, trying to do a casino in Peatone, because it seems to be very involved for these events, and this involves churches, and, I mean, it's the same paperwork, whether the churches are doing bingo, or, or, it's just, it's amazing that the amount of paperwork to go through just to get the charitable games permit, the provider permit, the charitable games, and then there's a supplier they have to deal with, so the back room of the Sopranos doesn't show up with a van full of equipment, and wants to lease it to the legion. So, they, they totally keep all the Sopranos from coming over.
All right, trustees, you have any questions? Does anybody? Okay. Then, we don't, we, we operate on a consensus at this point. Is the consensus of the, the board to essentially move forward for the next meeting and officially act on some type of ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Then, we, we will move forward, similar to the outline that has been handed here. If we, in the meantime, discover any other thing about the rules and regulations, we'll make sure that we put that in an explanation at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. On the lighter side, we'll, we'll come back to you at a later date to have our Memorial Day Parade from legion to the cemetery, and we have the FAA and the Air Force approve for a flight over.
Oh.
Okay, at our, at our ceremony.
The cemetery, yeah. Yes.
And I'm, I'm trained for a B-52 now.
You know what, we're a champ.
And.
They get it drawn over there.
We started there. And if, and if we get down to the week before the ceremony, we might go to a kite, we don't know.
Hey, Rich, could Riker volunteer to go to Kitty Hawk?
He could be a joke, he could be a better point.
Whoa.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Gary.
My job and days are over.
Maybe they could fly over.
All right, we're gonna move on down the agenda to the next item, which has to do with the Appointment Procurement Committee for the ICH grant and authorization to proceed with an RFP or RFQ process. George?
The village has received an ICH planning grant, as I've mentioned to you in the past, to amend our comprehensive plan. Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity has strict stipulations regarding the process to procure the consultant, to procure the consultant to do the work. The selection committee must be formed to conduct the selection process. Selection will then be forwarded to the board for approval. Most committees are composed of a mixture of staff, administration, and elected officials, president or trustee, administrators, and staff members, administrator to staff members. There's no hard rule as to who it has to be. Committee size of three members would be appropriate for a project of this size. In addition, several documents related to the procurement process must be completed and submitted to the state for approval. At this point, it is unclear whether an RFP, which is Request Proposals, or RFQ will be utilized. Determination will be made after further research. However, staff request permission to proceed through the procurement process, up to and including review and evaluation of applicants. We just wanna get started on this thing.
Okay, so what we're looking for is establishing the criteria for a selection committee and authorizing that committee to proceed with the procurement process. It's been suggested that a committee size of three members would be appropriate. As noted prior to that, it could include the president or a trustee, an administrator, and a staff member. Leave it up to you, board, to decide how you wanna do it. Have we had anything like this in the past?
We did a long time ago, a long time ago. Some of you may remember when we hired Lyndon Lynette as our village consultant for planning, we used something similar.
That was quite a while before most of.
Yeah, I think.
I think Jerry and, and Richard, the only two trustees going back that far.
That was a more expensive project, and the committee was much larger because of the scope of the, of the project.
And this is dealing with, what, a $70,000 grant?
$75,000.
$75,000 grant. That's gonna help us with our planning. So.
That's all, do it, that's all we gotta do, is do it.
Yeah? Is there a motion as to?
I make a motion, we.
Who's on the committee?
Who's on the committee, is what we're doing.
Well, I think, you need an administrator.
Right.
Right? That's, that's, you know, and a staff person, I think, one of you guys, our mayor should recommend, what staff person do you want?
Okay.
Okay.
And either you, or one of, if one of the board members wanna go? It's up to you.
I see the volunteers jumping out.
The, the selection will be brought back to.
For approval.
Yeah. The recommendation will be brought back to the whole board for approval, so it's not some secret committee.
No, it isn't. Okay, so Jerry, I'm gonna take it as you're moving to create the procurement committee of three, including the village president, the village administrator, and the staff member.
And I do the staff person, your choice.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Huffke. Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, wait a minute, before we do that, do we have to establish the, whether or not we wanna go for RFP or RFQ, or will that be the committee coming back?
Well, that will be more a function of what DCO tells us than how we need to take.
Okay, so at this point in time, we don't, do not need to establish that. All right. So, we're not establishing that yet, that will come back at, at a time to, to get your approval on the final decision. So, having said that, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
And Mr. Huffke?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
And Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed, committee is created. That pulls us down on the agenda through our questions of the press, and we'll talk to Karen after the meeting is over. Under Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, I've only got one, and that has to do with a notice to people. Under the Electrical Aggregation Act that we did, the residents will be receiving a reduced rate on their electric bill, and first energy supplier was the, the chosen vendor by the Will County Government Cooperative on this. And it should have appeared on either the last bill you got, or the one that you just got. In my particular case, it just showed up on the current bill. I know some others had said that, so if you look at your electric bill underneath Electrical Supplier, you will see first energy, and that relates to the electrical aggregation that we had a referendum on a year ago and agreed to over the past. And I just wanted to make people aware of that on their bill. Other announcements or correspondence? Not this time, but the next meeting, we're gonna have reminders and due dates for the waters or garbage.
And dogs.
And what?
And dogs. Dogs. And wary dogs.
Oh, dog titties, too, okay. So, if there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Oh! I take that back. I, I forgot, but we need to, I need, I'm gonna need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining. I will say at this point in time, it's nothing more than a discussion, there will be no action after we come out with no official action. And having said that, is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining?
So, move.
Second. Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Huffke, to go into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining discussions. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Huffke?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
And Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carrying will go into executive session. Yet, as I said before, there's no action pending, expectable to come out of that.